Good evening, everyone. I'd like to bring to order the San Rafael City Council meeting of Tuesday, July 21st, 2020, and ask you to join us in the pledge of allegiance. Well, thanks for joining us on this lovely evening. We did not have a closed session, so therefore we shall turn to the open time. That is a time and opportunity for you to address us on matters that may be on your mind, but not on this evening's agenda. We won't be able to take action upon your comments, but certainly will appreciate any suggestions, advice, seldom criticism, but occasionally, that's welcome too. In any case, open time for you to address us if you wish. Anyone? We'll then therefore move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just have three announcements. The first one is that our short-term rental program went into effect this month. So if anyone in San Rafael has a short-term rental or wants to create a short-term rental, such as through Airbnb, for example, there's a registration process, and we started just last week on people being able to go on to the website and register for those. So it's citiesanrafel.org/shorttermrentals. But that's, we're hoping to get everyone registered by the end of February so that we can keep that program moving along. Also, we have some new signage in the community about panhandling, and I just wanted to describe that really quickly, mostly for the community. And that is that a lot of people feel like if there's somebody that's standing in an intersection or a corner, that it's appropriate to give them funds, and that that's a good thing to do. And we have the benefit in our community of having some really amazing services and organizations that are supporting people that are experiencing homelessness. So we have some of the signage that we're doing is actually trying to provide an alternative and a hotline to call so that people that really want to do the right thing can direct either funds or their time or anything like that to the right place, rather than just handing it to someone who may not be safe standing in an intersection or that sort of thing. So that's kind of what we're trying to do behind that program. And again, we have such wonderful services that people pretty much are connected already, but we quickly can connect people with the services that they need when people are experiencing homelessness in our community. And then lastly, on wildfire, kind of jumping subjects all over, we have some meetings coming up. There's a few different things going on when it comes to wildfire prevention right now. One of them, of course, is the ballot measure in March 2020 that will ask the community, in most all of Marin, of whether they're interested in funding a new wildfire prevention program that works on evacuation and defensible space and fuel clearance and open space and keeping cities and open space safe. But also, the city of San Rafael has been working for quite some time on our own community wildfire prevention plan. I know the mayor and councilmember Bushy have been spending a lot of time on that. There are three meetings coming up next week. You get your choice of Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday. At Wednesdays, they're all at 5:30. Wednesdays, or Tuesdays is at Baia Vista Elementary, Wednesday at San Rafael Community Center, and then Thursday at Terre Laine Community Center. So whichever one, I imagine there'll be similar topics, so whichever one is more convenient for people. You can go here about what San Rafael's doing specifically when it comes to wildfire prevention, and then probably also get any questions answered about what's happening regionally at the same time. Thank you.
Good point. There was a nice presentation this morning at the Marin Forum by the chief of Nevada on wildfire. He's been actively involved, as was Jason Weber from the county. So a nice job by the two of them. Let's move on then to the consent calendar items 4A through 4H. You dealt with a single motion unless an item is held, and I wish to hold item number F. Anyone else? Nope. Anyone from the audience wish to address us on any of the consent items before we go to vote? Open, closed? This is going to be a good meeting. In which case, a motion with regard to the consent items would be appropriate.
I move the consent items, item 4, exclusive of item 4F.
Thank you very much.
Second.
Moon, second roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Collin.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I am at our carries 4-0. I've held a revised employment agreement between the city of San Rafael and city manager, only because I wanted to make sure that people were aware that we go through a pretty extensive review process with our city manager. And consent calendar might sound like or seem like we're just sort of, you know, blowing through it, but that's not the case. But more importantly, I would suggest the results of some of the comments, which this goes into his personnel files, so that's secret stuff, right? But I don't hesitate for a moment to announce to the community that we are, I think it's fair to say we, we are certainly impressed and pleased with the performance of the city manager. We're very, very fortunate to have Jim as our city manager, top across the board. He's smart, he's knowledgeable, he's good with people. He always gives us, I would suggest, certainly me, alternatives. So if there's an issue, it's, well, let's see, there's this approach, that approach, or the other, and so it narrows it down and you make your decision. And I feel confident that we've covered the bases and come to the right conclusion going through that process. So Jim, on behalf of the community and certainly the city council, we greatly appreciate all you've done and look forward to the coming years. Thank you for your service.
Thank you so much, Mayor and Council. It's my absolute pleasure and honor to serve the council and work with this great community. So, thank you.
We are fortunate in that regard. And therefore, could we have a motion with regard to F?
I move item 4F.
Second.
Moon, second, and roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Collin.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I am at our carries, resounding 4-0. We'll move on to the public hearing, starting, well, starting and closing with one item, San Quentin Pump Station reconstruction. Glad you're here this evening. I think we need some help with this.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Hunter Young of Public Works. This evening, we're pleased to present to you a brief overview of the San Quentin Pump Station reconstruction project. This is a picture of the existing station, along with the ponding area behind it. This pump station was constructed originally as part of an assessment district back in 1971. You can see, highlighted in blue, is the drainage area. So all of the rainwater that falls in this giant area does eventually funnel down and drain to this pump station. So it's quite an area. It encompasses the 580 freeway, the Anderson Drive corridor, and all of the businesses and the drainage that lands on a lot of those properties and hillsides. It does drain from, as you can see, the pump station is located behind Target to kind of orient you here, and then there is a very long pipe that drains underground and discharges straight into the bay. There's nothing too fancy, but it is a system that is aged and has, you know, essentially fulfilled its service life. There's currently two pumps at the station. There's always a concern if one pump were to fail or to need rehabilitation. We hope and pray that that happens during the summer months, and so our Public Works maintenance crews do a wonderful job, proactively looking and at the pumps to make sure they're in adequate condition. But as you know, if we do have, dare I say, the pun, a perfect storm where we have high tides, king tides coming in, and the rain trying to get out to the bay, it can be a struggle. And so a new pump station is certainly in order, and we're working actively towards that goal. This evening, we have a couple of members of our design team who will review with you some of the environmental document and some of the, not concerns, but the items that they have researched and studied, and what we're doing about that. So with that, I will turn the time over to members, Rachel Carnes of WRA, our environmental consultant.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Madam Vice Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Rachel Carnes with WRA Environmental Consultants. WRA was hired by the Department of Public Works to prepare the initial study and proposed mitigated negative declaration for the project, or ISMND. In order to do this, we did study the entire project site and analyzed it for environmental impacts, as called for under CEQA. The draft ISMND was also released for a 30-day public review period from November 8th to December 13th. This was done so with a notice of completion to the state clearinghouse to, in order to make sure it got to any interested state agencies, as well as a notice of intent that was sent to members, interested members of the public and local agencies. In the course of our study, we found that there were potentially significant impacts only in the categories of biological resources, cultural resources, hazards or hazardous materials, noise, and tribal cultural resources. We also found that all of the impacts in all these resource areas could be reduced to a less than significant level with the mitigation measures implemented that we've outlined in the mitigation monitoring and reporting program that was attached to the staff report. In the course of the public review, only one comment was received on the draft ISMND. This was from the Marin Audubon Society, and the city and WRA did prepare a response to comments, and in that response, it was found that no new impacts were found. And it was also found that no, there was no change to the severity of the impacts found, and therefore, no recirculation is required for the ISMND and no EIR is required.
So this evening, in terms of next step, we're looking to hold a public hearing to receive any further public comments and to have council take action to approve this CEQA document. Following that approval, we would move forward towards coordination with regulatory permitting After that, we would finalize the design itself and then go ahead and identify construction funding. Public Works is actively doing that. There is a grant that we are currently in the process of applying for. We are seeking about $2.4 million in federal money to do that with a local match of about $800,000. So we're crossing our fingers to see if that is something that will be favorably reviewed and assist in furthering this project into construction. And with that, we can have any comments or questions from the council.
Comments, questions? Yes, Mayor.
Hunter, what happens if we don't? I know we're fearful of the perfect storm. What happens if it occurs?
What happens if the perfect storm actually occurs?
Right, metaphorically speaking.
If, we haven't, based on Mark Wright, he is our part, or our street maintenance supervisor, he has indicated in his roughly 35-year career here at the city, that the freeway, 580 freeway, has been closed approximately between once and twice with the California Highway Patrol kind of on standby a different time for this type of event. And in those cases, it was one of the pumps that had gone down, and so that's really the way to avoid that is active maintenance. Pulling out the pumps during the dry season, making sure everything is buttoned up so that come the rainy season, we're in pretty good shape. But our maintenance crews understand the impacts that this would have, the economic impacts, the traffic impacts, should that sort of event happen, and so we are actively working towards making sure that doesn't happen.
Thank you.
Other questions? Open the public, anyone from the public wish to address us on this item? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Phillips and Council. My name is Kiki Laporta.
And I'm Jerry Beletta.
And we're both speaking on behalf of Sustainable San Rafael. One of our board members, Stuart Segal, prepared an analysis of this item for us, and he is unavailable at this moment to deliver that document to you. So Jerry and I are going to do our best to be Stuart for a moment. Sustainable San Rafael recommends that the city adopt the ISMND, yet hold off on advancing the project any further at this time. Do not adopt recommendation two. This pump station sits in the lowland at the edge of the Canalways property. Canalways and the lands to its north and south were tidal bay mud flats until they were dyked in the 1950s. Much of the roughly 85-acre Canalways property is dyked marsh today, has never been filled, and thus has long been a conservation target. Today, this property sits within the path of southeast San Rafael stormwater runoff.
Yeah, the reason for this delay recommendation is that this property has a significant role to play in the city's future sea level rise adaptation, a role that has many ideas but no plans. Project costs for the pump station and the outfall pipe replacement have a reasonable likelihood of becoming stranded assets, investments that don't last their designed life. It may operative ineffectively under future landscape arrangements and storm flows, or its location may interfere with desirable sea level rise adaptation strategies. Sustainable San Rafael recommends that the city complete its sea level rise adaptation plan before it advances the San Quentin pump station replacement, and not to advance it if that plan makes clear that the proposed project would become a stranded asset. This project is a great example of the opportunity to be looking forward through the climate change lens with our costly public infrastructure process.
As a side note, the capacity of the new pump station was not designed to account for increased storm intensity predicted by climate change forecasts, an issue wholly separate from sea level rise adaptation. The engineers utilize long-established design protocols, which unfortunately long predate any consideration of climate change. Consequently, the new pump station itself may in fact be undersized for the stated purpose. Briefly, Sustainable San Rafael believes that the general plan update process currently underway and the excellent work being undertaken by city staff and Paul Jensen be brought into, brought to bear before a decision is made on making this infrastructure investment. Thank you very much.
And thank you for your comments. John.
Yeah, John Reynolds in the canal, yeah. So I'm concerned too. I mean, Douglas Mudo and others, this is a priority area concerning sea level rise in addition to Marin City. So that's appropriate. I think I would respond to Sustainable San Rafael, I would agree with him that we should look at how this would affect, you know, the sea level rise and the climate change reality, how that would feed into making a decision about the pump station going forward. I think we really take that seriously, very much so. Thank you.
And thank you. Next person.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Joanne Webster, San Rafael Chamber of Commerce. This is the first time I'm hearing about this. The environmental documents have already been submitted. Why are these voices coming out now? East San Rafael generates 65% of our sales tax dollars. I don't think we should delay this project. I think we should go look for the funding. We don't want to wait until the perfect storm happens. It's, you know, and when are we going to get a sea level adaptation policy? Please do not delay this project. Thanks.
And thanks for your input. Anyone else? See no one? Return. Staff comments with regard to the input?
Council Mayor, we are of the opinion that in the absence of construction funding, and it is a significant investment, we want to make sure that we do this right, we do it properly. But we do suggest that we move forward with approval and with finishing out the design. We're only about 65% of the way through the design process. We've actually come to a stopping point until the environmental document is approved because we want to solicit any feedback that the regulatory agencies may provide. That may actually change what we're able to design, what we're able and allowed to construct, and our means and methods to doing that. In terms of the importance of this particular project, I cannot overstate the impact it would have to all of our residents if something did happen. And I think at this time, it makes sense to continue forward, but understanding that we are increasing in terms of the comment about the pump size. We have two smaller-sized pumps that are out there today. They've been a great, and they've been very efficient, but we certainly understand the potential for sea level rise and future use. And as development comes online and there's more impervious areas in the city, some of that rainwater is going to end up in this particular watershed going through this pump station. As such, we have consequently increased the size of the pumps, and we've actually added a third pump to address that. So in terms of safety and having a fallback, should one pump fail, we would immediately have another one that's sitting in the wings. We could potentially have up to three large pumps working simultaneously if that were to be the need. In terms of, as it relates to Paul's work in the sea level adaptation report, I don't know exactly how this may interface with that, other than to say, we are actually, the pipe that discharges water from the ponding area to the bay, we're not replacing, or we're rehabbing about, let's say, 80 to 90% of it. We're stopping short of about 100 feet, give or take, from the bay itself, partly to not have to coordinate with other regulatory agencies. We don't think that the pipe at that point that goes through the levee is at a point where it needs rehabilitation or rehab. So we think we can push this project forward and understand a little bit better the design, understand what the construction cost impacts will be, and that way we can come up with a funding strategy if indeed we're not successful in getting this grant opportunity that I mentioned a moment ago.
And thanks for that.
Mayor, could I add on just a little bit to that really briefly? I just wanted to make clear that oftentimes in these kind of staff reports, it'll say, asking for the environmental documents to be approved and authorize these additional funds to do the next phase of design. In this case, we're not asking for additional funds. Those funds have already been approved, and we're just noting that we would be moving on to the next phase of design. So I wanted to make that clear. The main point of the agenda was to adopt the environmental documents tonight. I see Stuart just walked in. Stuart's been a great partner of ours on lots of different projects, so we're more than happy to reach out and make sure that we understand all of Stuart's comments and any concerns from Sustainable San Rafael as we look, moving forward with the design.
Okay. Kate.
So does it make sense to have Paul comment on the sea level rise adaptation plan? I mean, as the council liaison, I'm pretty aware of where we are with our climate change action plan, and I think we all recognize business as usual won't work. I mean, we actually have to look, when these opportunities come forward, to be really forward-thinking in a way that we have not had to in the past. So their comments have really gotten my attention, and I'm sorry it was last minute to Joanne's point, but we know about it now, and so let's have that discussion.
Certainly. Let me start by telling you where we are with the general plan 2040. We're looking to adopt that plan mid-year. What we're including in the general plan will be some specific policies and programs related to sea level rise. We're not in the position yet to adopt an adaptation plan. What we are going to be preparing is an adaptation report because we have a lot of resources and reports that have been done on San Rafael, including the very detailed bayway vulnerability assessment that was prepared by the county. There are a number of ideas that we have, which include the Canalways property, that aren't confirmed. Of course, they have to be studied, but they are ideas that will be included in the general plan, so opportunity areas for adaptation. So that's really where we are on this. I mean, there, it's still a little open-ended, but that's where we are.
Yes, a follow-up question?
Yeah, of course.
So is there a way to move forward recognizing that we don't have all the information that we need? We still want to move forward to look at securing grant monies, but we don't want to just go out and do that without being thoughtful, without, and that whole stranded asset, I don't even want to think about what that is. That's awful. We don't want stranded assets in San Rafael. So is there a way that we can do both? We want our cake, and we want to eat it too in this case.
Yes, I do think it's reasonable to understand that as we progress, we can certainly sit down internally and work cross-departementally and coordinate. We're currently doing that on the Tuscany Marsh project and some other work that Paul and Stuart and others have been involved with, and so I think this is a natural extension of that other work and coordination.
And would it make sense to have something in the motion that talks about how we are looking at potential impacts of sea level rise and flooding in the final design to actually call it out?
Yes, that seems reasonable.
And Paul, thank you for your input, and I'm assuming you're not the prime presenter, so I'm assuming you're on board with the recommendations.
Absolutely. Frankly, I, you know, not knowing the details of the pump station improvements, but just looking at the initial scope, I don't think this is going to prejudice future decisions on this property or the adjacent property in planning for sea level rise.
Yeah, it'll take some time for you to put this together, no?
One item to highlight is that the new pump station is proposed to be constructed literally adjacent to the existing. We had considered various alternatives at the very outset of the project, even one option of moving the new pump station closer to the bay to reduce that length of pipe, that discharge pipe. What we have found is that the environmental mitigation really makes that difficult. We don't know that there's a need for it, but in this case, the project that has been studied and is proposed before you this evening is one that minimizes the environmental impacts, increases the likelihood of getting any type of funding for the project, and actually would work in terms of timeline and to that effect, actually would work better than with Paul's group and working with Sustainable San Rafael. So it's really a win-win.
And maybe to close the loop to some degree, Jim, if I could, since you're overseeing the departments that are presenting this evening, I'm assuming you're also willing to address Kate's valid point, it seems to me.
Absolutely. I think it's the context of everything that we're doing when we do capital projects as we're looking at climate change and sea level rise. Yes.
Any other questions, comments? In which case, a motion would be appropriate. Kate, you want to offer a motion?
So to be clear, are there two motions? When I'm looking at the staff report, recommended action, it looks like there are two actions.
There are two recommended action points. Let's take them separately.
Okay. So I move approval that we adopt the mitigated negative declaration.
Second.
I was going to keep reading it, but okay.
Excuse me, moving, second roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Collin.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I am at our carries 4-0. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, everyone.
So do this.
And let's go on to the second.
Okay. Make a motion that we authorize the staff to proceed with the final design in coordination, consultation, I don't know what the wording is. Sea level rise in there or something? With our adaptation plan for sea level rise or something to that effect? I don't know.
Maybe taking.
Is that sufficient?
Second.
Did you get it? Could you recite that? I missed it, I'm afraid.
Do you want me to recite it, or you want our city attorney to recite it?
No, you can do it, you got it.
Okay. I move that we authorize staff to proceed with the final design, taking into consideration the sea level rise adaptation planning that the city is currently undergoing.
Okay.
Second.
Better than the city attorney could have recited. No, far better. In any case, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Collin.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I am at our carries 4-0, and once again, thank you everyone for helping us with this, in particular the addition that we've added. Let's move on to the other agenda items.
Good evening, Mayor Phillips.
Good evening.
And city councilmembers. This is a topic that's been before you before several times, and what I'd like to do is I'd like to start with some background, and I want to start with the fact that we had prepared and presented a comprehensive report on housing in August 2018, and there were four takeaways from that meeting for us to take a look at renter protection, short-term rentals, housing for an aging population, and then lastly, challenges to approval and development of housing. The first two items we tackled in 2018 and 2019 with the adoption of ordinances and policies related to both renter protection measures, and as the city manager mentioned, we just launched the short-term rental registration and enforcement program. On the last bullet point, that's what we're here for this evening. In September, we presented an informational report to the council on the challenges to approving and development of housing. As outlined in the staff report, you may recall, this was a lot of effort. We interviewed a number of stakeholders. We reviewed a number of studies and resources and best practices, and we identified 11 challenges to approving and developing housing. And then we also identified 13 measures or actions that could be considered by the city. As a result of that meeting, the city council requested that we conduct a couple of public workshops on the topic and to vet some of these ideas. And so we hosted two workshops. And so we hosted two workshops, and the first workshop was held on November 3rd. That particular workshop focused on regulatory and zoning-related actions to streamline the city review process, and that was followed up by a workshop on November 14th, which focused primarily on our inclusionary housing policy, our housing trust fund, and housing development financing. Each of the workshops were attended by about thirty-five to forty-five people, and the meetings allowed us an opportunity to poll everyone on a number of the recommended measures and actions, and we got some very good results. What I'll first start with is for workshop number one, I can say this, there was a strong support for looking at making changes, to make things more streamlined and easier. For example, the city should consider changes to the design review board to streamline the project review process. Of those polled, eighty-one percent felt very strongly that we should consider looking at this. Another of the recommendations was to look at ways to streamline our SEQA process and also reduce technical studies in reviewing projects, again strongly supported. So we got some very good responses at the first workshop, followed by the second workshop, where we got even stronger responses on the topic areas of our inclusionary housing requirement and also our trust fund, our housing trust fund. The question was raised, should we consider changes to our current inclusionary housing requirement? We've had an inclusionary housing requirement in place since the mid-1980s, it's worked well up to this point. Essentially, we've gotten affordable housing, integrated and market rate projects citywide, both for sale and rental. Is it time to take a look at other options? That's where we are at this milestone. There was also a recommendation to consider perhaps a menu of options to inclusionary housing requirements. This got the highest support, ninety-seven percent of those that were polled supported this, and several other items. So what we did is we took the poll results, we looked at our timing obligations and the urgency, reviewed the policies and actions, and we prioritized how we're going to proceed with these, and that's what we're presenting this evening. I'd like to say, we'd like to handle these all this evening and take care of them tonight, but we've got a lot going on, including our general plan updates, so what we've done is we've prioritized them. And they're in these categories. First, those actions and measures that are currently underway. One is ready for your action this evening, and I'll get into that in a moment. We have a Phase One, and those are actions and measures to bring forward in the spring and summer of 2020, followed by Phase Two, which are measures to bring to you later this year. Phase Three, anticipated in early 2021, and then we have one of the recommended actions, which is on hold. So the measures that are currently underway, we've reported this to you before, the first is to continue what we call the Planning Commission First Review Process Sequence. Historically, what we've been doing is, when projects come in, the first public forum has been the Design Review Board, and of course, the Design Review Board focuses on design, and so if we have a controversial project, this is a first opportunity for the public to comment, and they want to comment on the overall major policy issues on the project, density, whether or not the use is appropriate, and there's a level of frustration when we take these things to the Design Review Board, because that is not their mission, that's not their purpose. So the applicant leaves frustrated, the public leaves frustrated. So what we've done is we've switched up this process, and we've gone to the Planning Commission First, which has actually worked quite well on a number of projects. In fact, the latest project that went forward for the Planning Commission First approach was, is a housing development project on Los Camos Road, which you might have read about in the Marin Independent Journal. So we're going to continue with that review sequence. The second is to support what's called a Form-Based Code for our downtown. We have a downtown precise plan that we're preparing. Form-Based Code is a much more streamlined zoning process for development projects in the downtown area, and that's currently underway. Streamline our SEQA and environmental review process, we've done that with a number of projects, as well as Policy Four, reducing requirements for technical studies. Just one caution, we look at these on a case-by-case basis. Some projects require environmental review and a detailed study because of where they're located, or because they are requesting a zone change, and some projects which are infill, like the Seagate Development Project in downtown, was perfect for an exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act. So we'll be looking at these on a case-by-case basis, but keeping that in mind. And then lastly, Policy Five, which is providing a more streamlined pre-application concept review for housing projects. What this means is, we have a pre-application process right now, which takes many weeks. With this sort of a hybrid to that process, it wouldn't replace our current pre-application process, but what it would do, it would allow an applicant to come in with a concept, a simple concept, and we run it by staff in the course of several weeks without a fee, and we've done this several times. It gives a more cursory review and response, but it can be a successful tool. So measure ready for city council action, that's the second item on the agenda tonight following this item, and that is to review recommendations that we have for changes to our city Affordable Housing Trust Fund and how we administer the money in that fund and the monies we expect coming into that fund moving forward. Moving on to Phase One measures, which we are committed to complete by spring and summer of 2020, the first are Policies Seven and Eight, which go hand-in-hand. These are changes to our city's inclusionary housing requirements, and also an update of our affordable housing in Lufee. I have to say on the latter, we are partnering with the county to update our fee. There's a partnership study that's been, that's underway, that was funded by Senate Bill Two grant money, and so in part, this is attached at the hip with that study, and I understand that study will be completed soon. Policy number nine, adopt by-right zoning for 100% affordable housing projects. Again, this is something that's underway. We received, again, a Senate Bill Two planning grant to take a look at by-right zoning for our high-density residential zoning districts for 100% affordable housing projects. In fact, we have a pilot project that goes with this, which is the homeward bound development for supportive housing on Mill Street. And then lastly, my favorite, accessory dwelling units. As I've mentioned before, we've held off on adopting an accessory dwelling unit ordinance because we've been following the state guidelines. The state keeps changing the regulations and updating them and making them actually more complicated, but a lot easier for homeowners in the end to get an accessory dwelling unit approved, to the point where there's some very minimal requirements now, and we've done pretty well with ADU startups in the last couple of years. We are prepared to take those recent changes to the state law, incorporating them into the draft and bringing our own ordinance forward in this timeframe. I would like to mention, we're going to be hosting a coffee in Codes. I don't know if you may recall, this is where we have our building official and our community development staff host like a meeting in here for specific stakeholders on changes in laws. It will be on this topic, as well as tiny homes, because we have a building official who is very interested in looking at tiny homes as a way of providing accessory dwelling units. So those two will be handled in one coffee in Codes, and that will be in early March, by the way. The second phase of measures, which are fall and winter, that consider changes to our Design Review Board, and then also update the city's density bonus ordinance. And then in 2021, changes to payment of development impact fees, and lastly, Policy Fourteen, supporting city developer partnerships. What this policy covers, if you may recall when we provided you a report in September, is that we completed an air rights study of parking lots as a possibility for partnership with private developers, and this could involve a competition or a request for proposal process. We would be pursuing that second step in that study and taking that more seriously. And lastly, the one measure that we decided to place on hold is the policy for looking at raising our appeal fee and changing our appeal process. When we did the polling at the workshop, this particular topic didn't get really, it got the lowest points out of all of the others to pursue. However, I would like to say that we are working on a master fee schedule update, which is citywide, and it will be looking at the appeal fee and revisiting that. So the options to consider for tonight is to accept the report, and one of the items, of course, is subsequent item on the agenda for formal action. With the recommendations as directed by staff, there are several other options. If you need additional information, we can step away and bring more information back to you, and/or you can expand on our recommendations. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, thanks for the presentation and the, I think it must have been about four-hundred-page report, maybe not quite that many, but it seemed like it at times. In any case, thanks for the work you've done. And the workshops, I attended both of them, and they were well-attended. Input was good, and it looks like you've incorporated some of the thinking, so I think that was worthwhile, and thanks for doing that, to bring the community into that exercise, that process. So I understand there really is maybe some dialogue, some feedback with regard to each of the propositions you've proposed, but only one action is going to be taken, and that'll be the next agenda item, so maybe we can hold off on discussion on that one until we get to it in just a moment. So having said that, first, any questions of staff, then we'll open it to the public. Mary Beth?
Paul, your staff report is excellent. I want to ask you sort of a hypothetical question. I thought it worked really well with the audiences in the workshops, to have the clickers, if you will, and do the voting, and I noticed that most of your recommendations are consistent with the way those votes went. I want to ask you, though, setting all of that aside, because I don't want this to be driven by who happened to show up that night, it wasn't exactly a statistically significant endeavor. Setting all of that aside, the votes aside, in your professional judgment, do those numbers happen to line up with what you think is the right thing to do here?
Absolutely. In fact, we have a housing working group that, of staff, so this is a collective effort. This isn't just me, it's Ethan and a number of others, and I think we've all agree on what we saw in the polling, so we feel very comfortable with this.
Okay, so it's not just an issue.
I think the frustration is prioritizing them and our limited resources, is what to tackle, what's important to tackle first, and we did get some feedback from a number of folks outside of City Hall.
Thanks, good question.
And following up on that, so in your prioritizing, do you feel like you're getting the biggest bang for the buck, as it were, when, things that will really move the needle and not just that we have the current resources for? Does that make sense?
I think so. I think, setting aside the items that are already underway, if you noticed under Phase One.
Yeah.
I think the biggest was the inclusionary housing. That'll be probably the biggest policy that will be coming back to you first, so I think that's what's real important. There are some others that are further down the list, like the development impact fees. It's something that we're going to be discussing, because there's two parts to that. One is you can consider reductions in fees, but then it has implications for our general fund, but then there's also changing our milestone requirements for fees, and that is, instead of requiring that those fees be paid at the time a building permit is issued, is perhaps deferring those to when the building or the project is completed for occupancy, and we heard that from the developers, that is a really, that's a win for them, because they can leverage their financing much better. So that's one of the things that we may visit sooner than later, but it depends upon how our resources shake out.
And I agree with Mary Beth. I mean, your report is excellent, because there's so much information. We want to do all of it at once, but the reality is, we do need to prioritize, and I think the thoughtfulness really came through. I have a very specific question, because when we've talked about it before, it was always in general policies, and you have more information, and that is on the by-right zoning. For the HR1, and I didn't see a map in there, so, do you have a map? So when we get to that point, we're going to be talking about it further, is to have a better understanding of where HR1 is.
Certainly.
So when I read this, okay, in theory, but I don't really have enough information to feel fully confident in approving that, and the other part was, I know we have a pilot program with the Homeward Bound Project, and how would any learnings from that pilot make their way back into a resolution?
Good point.
So it's great to have a pilot, but what we learned from that, so.
John, do you, no. Again, thanks for the thorough report, and again, thanks for involving the community. I think that was a good process. Couple of random points. With regard to Planning Commission and Design Review Board, I think that's going to be the most intriguing in some ways, is how that fits together and the sequence, and whether or not we reconfigure our Design Review Board, a couple of ways that you've proposed for consideration. So I think that is going to be very interesting. The fees, I'm okay with the way you've laid it out. And one I find that I'm still not quite comfortable with, and maybe you can help me down the road, that is Form-Based, that seems like a new concept. I'm not opposed to it, I'm just wondering what the consequences are of that. I can generalize, I can see, okay, you've got a box and fit whatever you can within that, but what are the consequences of that configuration? I don't quite have that yet, so I'll be interested in that aspect, along with the others, certainly. The points you brought up are excellent, and it's challenging sometimes to question yourself and the process, et cetera, and you've done that, and I applaud you for doing so. Anyone from the public wish to address us on this item?
I'm pinch-hitting tonight for Bill. Kiki Laporta for Sustainable San Rafael, once again. And first of all, both on a personal note, on behalf of Marin Environmental Housing Collaborative and on behalf of Sustainable San Rafael, I want to thank the city, city staff, council members, and especially Paul Jensen for this incredible work in terms of identifying the barriers to creating housing for our workers, our families, our longtime community members, so thank you for that. You received a letter from Sustainable San Rafael earlier today, I'm not going to read the entire thing, I will just bring out a few points, if you don't mind. "We applaud moving forward with a comprehensive package of proposed housing policies to confront the growing shortage of housing in our community." Housing across all the spectrum of incomes, by the way. We are, I'll just quickly go through. Policy number six, Affordable Housing Trust Fund, we request that the staff clarify that affordable housing includes moderate-income units. For-profit as well as nonprofit property owners and developers could be funded so long as affordable housing goals are secured. C, the leveraging of matching funds would be among the criteria for prioritizing projects seeking funding, but not the sole criterion. D, the creation of new affordable units would be a priority. E, rental assistance, example vouchers, could be among the other ways the fund might be used to increase the availability of affordable housing. Policy seven, inclusionary housing. "We strongly recommend that inclusionary housing be, in fact, included within all housing developments to promote an economically-integrated community and to provide urgently-needed affordable units on the same timeline as market-rate units." "A simple solution for rental projects," oh, that was quick, sorry.
Go ahead and continue.
"A simple solution for rental projects might be to reduce the requirement for low and very low-income units from twenty percent to fifteen percent, while adding a five-percent target for moderate-income units that allow a greater return on investment." Paul's favorite, ADUs and JDU's, we wholeheartedly support, thank you for that. Design Review Board changes, carry on, see how that goes. And especially, "We urge much speedier pursuit of public-private efforts to make use of air rights over public properties like parking lots and garages to develop affordable housing along with the development of renewed entrepreneurial capacity and spirit within city departments to undertake such projects as once was done." That'll do it for us, thank you very much.
And thanks for your input, and certainly the letter that we did receive, and thanks for doing so. Anyone else? Anyone else? At least two. I sometimes get quick with this gavel, so, don't hesitate.
Good evening, Victoria DeWitt, I live in the West End neighborhood. One comment about those workshops, I wasn't able to make them, but I would wonder if that's representative of San Rafael as a whole, or if it is more representative of a certain interest in San Rafael. Just a question about putting so much emphasis on a survey like that. I have comments about the option 1C3 with regard to the Design Review Board. I would like to know what level, if public participation would be recommended as part of the 1C3, or would that eliminate the public participation? And my comment about small projects is 10 units may be small in the downtown area. That is a big project in my neighborhood. So I recommend keeping the full Design Review Board hearing format for development on hillsides, subject to the Hillside Design Guidelines. We have remaining infill lots that are really difficult to develop with extremely steep slopes and odd-shaped or substandard lot sizes. I think the added expertise from the full design re-board, Design Review Board is important to ensure full compliance with the Hillside Design Guidelines and optimal design. I think 1C3 would weaken those guidelines. I can see the resulting review being less comprehensive without the public oversight. As far as the ADUs, adopting ADUs, I don't feel you can increase density on hillside neighborhoods where you cannot provide emergency services that meet NFPA standards for response time. That includes all ADUs and multifamily development on hillsides with single-family residences. Fremont Road and Upper Fremont Drive are both dead-end streets with no fire truck turnaround. In fact, we currently have two applications for two new homes on this hill, and the Fire Department is not requiring the addition of a fire truck turnaround per CFC Appendix D. Instead, they are stating a disclaimer that response time will be subpar in this area and not meet recommended guidelines. You can't keep ignoring substandard city streets with no effort to remedy the situation at the same time approving additional housing and sustaining two levels of emergency service in San Rafael, those who have adequate response time and those who don't. And as far as the appeal fee, I'll comment briefly. Our neighborhood, $300 or $350 is an impediment to filing an appeal, so I would encourage you not to raise it, depending on if you raise it and by how much, that could effectively eliminate public participation in these projects. Two things to consider regarding appeals is part of the hearing process. Right now, the zoning administrative hearing process has replaced a lot of what went to the Planning Commission in the past. And I've always felt that there was a little bit of appearance of bias in those hearings because you've got the planner who has worked with the applicant all this time, and they're the one that, that are making a decision on the project. I've had two situations where the planner actually hugged the applicant after approving the application in front of neighbors who had opposed the permit. So it definitely gives the appearance of bias. And then I've seen a trend in some of the zoning administrative hearings where applicants will bring all their family, friends, sometimes babies, anybody to the hearing to try to fill the room, try to outnumber the opponents and create distractions, effectively clogging the whole hearing process so that you hear from all these people that I call char-, oops, character witnesses, and you don't really, you run out of time to discuss, discuss relevant issues and come up with resolutions, so.
Can you wrap it up? You made some excellent points, so I don't want to cut you off.
I'm through.
If you're there.
I'm done, thank you.
With regard to the public comment, we are, your question, public comment, just to comment briefly on that, we, we subscribe to, to public input and, and sure that that will continue.
Yes, I'm a big supporter of public participation and these processes.
With regard to the workshop, just quickly, again, one of my concerns, quite frankly, was whether or not that was a representation of the community, as opposed to special interest. I've got a minor statistic, and so I get a little bit wrapped up in that stuff sometimes, and that was a concern which I did express. But nevertheless, having said that, Mary Beth's point, or question, rather, was, I thought, right on, and that is, the staff, we get great respect for, and they, they take these matters seriously and independently, I would suggest, as to what's the best interest of the city, and, and that's why I appreciated her question, which was, yes, I concur. But I share your concern, quite frankly.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, thank you, Gary, yeah.
Next person, please. Linda.
There's no sign-in list today.
Oh, you're done. Thank you very much.
Starting. Mayor and city council members and, and staff, I'm just so thrilled and grateful for your work on this. I am speaking as a member of the Marin Environmental Housing Collaborative. You have our letter. I'll just note that halfway through the housing cycle, San Rafael has issued permits for just about a quarter of our goal and only 2% of the required goal for very-low-income units. We strongly support the ADUs and JDUs because that's the housing that's being built today, and that can make a real difference for a real, an important part of our working force to participate. Caution about using that funding for renter-support subsidies. You know, the goal is to have actual units for people, and so maybe for emergency, short-term, so folks can have a month or two to stay in their unit and pull things together, but we don't want to get into subsidizing renters over a long term. And then also, issue RFPs for all of those housing sites on the parking lots, you know, that's an important way that the, the city can have a role. To the need, so my other hat is with the Aging Action Initiative. We have heard, and you will hear from age-friendly planning countywide and in the city, the concern about housing. Over half of the people who are homeless these days coming in for services are over 50. The largest volume of calls to 457 INFO is about housing. Renters who are desperate to stay here, a studio anywhere, and they're looking at having to move to their cars, which is where older women move to. So the last thing I'd like to ask is that we, you do some sort of follow-up, a check-in in six months or a year, just to see how are the unit production going, who's being housed, and what kind of difference you're making? Because what you're doing to do tonight with this recommendation is going to make a difference. Thank you.
That's really a good point, Linda, and I will request that that be, that be put in place, so we get a feedback at that point. Thanks for the suggestion. Anyone else? Then let's return for follow-up comments and a motion with regard to this item, then we'll go on to the related next agenda item. Any questions, comments? Motion would be appropriate in much case.
Move approval that we accept the report.
Thank you, and?
Second.
And second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I'm editor carries 4-0. Thanks once again, everybody, and I will now go on to Guidelines for Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
All right, so we're going to switch over. I'll take over from here. So, the item before you is Resolutions on Guidelines for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for the Administration. This was a policy recommendation from the Information Report on Challenges and Impediments to Housing Development on September 3, 2019. Currently, the city does not have an existing policy and procedures for awarding housing trust fund monies across competing requests. Right now, we have an Affordable Housing in lieu fund, which is paid for by fractional in lieu fees from our inclusionary housing as well as some impact fees. Our current balance is $1.3 million, and we're expecting about another $1 million over the next 12 months. Additionally, we expect about $900,000 in additional fees estimated in the next five years, and that's just through normal residential development. Additionally, there's $1.5 million in one-time payment anticipated from the biomurant project. At this time, staff has received funding requests from a variety of projects, ranging from new construction projects to the acquisition of an existing market-rate property to deed restrict as affordable. This is part of the impetus as to why we're coming tonight with these guidelines. One of the, the key points to a trust fund is really trying to use that money to leverage other funding sources. Currently, there's $6 billion in state funding that's been allocated for housing development, and most of those state funding programs provide preference points for projects receiving matching local funds. So, in other words, we can use the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to make projects more likely to receive state funding. Additionally, one of the main sources for the affordable housing developers to finance their projects is what's known as a low-income housing tax credit, or a LITC. And there's both state and federal LITCs. To qualify for a LITC, a project needs to receive local funds. So, the action before the council tonight, we have a proposed guideline, proposed guidelines, these are based off of Marin County's existing policies and procedures for administering their housing trust fund. Because there's this similar process, we didn't feel the need to have to reinvent the wheel. One key difference is that instead of Board of Supervisors overseeing the Marin County's Housing Trust Fund, the city council would be overseeing this trust fund, as well as any staff funding recommendations would require city council approval. So what we've presented are two potential application processes. Both require the same application form, but timing's a little bit different. The first one is a Notice of Funding Availability Process. This is a pretty standard NOFA. The actual requirements of the application process would be inside the NOFA, so what criteria, how we're going to wait them, timelines, those sorts of things, question-and-answer periods. And really, what a NOFA is intended for is to help balance a competitive process, and it's really intended for periods when requests exceed available funds. We've also proposed a separate rolling application process, and really, this is intended to provide city funding for eligible projects that need a funding decision quickly, or for projects that need a decision before a NOFA application process could be conducted. So what are the eligible projects, both for the NOFA and for rolling application? That includes rental housing, that means the affordability requirements, including permanent supportive housing projects, single-room occupancy projects, supportive in transitional housing, the residential portions of mixed-use and live-work projects, conversion of market-rate housing to affordable, single-family or multifamily homeownership projects that meet the affordability guidelines, and really, any other project that meets the goals and the priorities of the guidelines themselves. Eligible applicants would include nonprofits, public agencies, for-profit developers that are working in partnership with a nonprofit, as well as any other applicant that's really, again, trying to further affordable housing in, in the city. Eligible activities, this includes seed and catalyst funds for very early costs to expedite project development, land or property acquisition for new development, pre-development costs, construction costs, rehabilitation activities to renovate existing rental units, conversion of market-rate housing or non-residential buildings to deed-restricted affordable housing, and again, any other projects that really meet the needs of affordable housing. Funding terms and amounts, key here is really maintaining flexibility. So, funding terms would either be as part of a loan or a grant, and would really vary by the project in order to meet the needs of the project, including the availability of financing, the financing methods, development configurations, and organizational capacity of the applicant. Really, it's taking a look at the totality of the project and trying to make sure that the funds that we're using are being leveraged to their maximum extent. Staff also recommends a bias towards filling a final funding gap to create a fully-funded project. Some jurisdictions, they, they provide some funding here and some funding there. The problem with that is that oftentimes, that can lead to a sort of purgatory to try to get fully-funded projects. How staff is proposing evaluating potential projects, the first would be tangible and cost-effective benefit to the community, also looking at the development team and making sure they're experienced and highly capable, as well as the management team is also experienced and highly capable. As part of the application, we would want documentation showing readiness to proceed on the project. Financing and in-kind contributions to match the city would also increase the criteria. And then finally, making sure that there's a reasonable per-unit subsidy that's being provided for those affordable units. So tonight, the options are to adopt resolution as presented, to adopt the resolution with modifications, to direct staff to return with more information, or to take no action.
Thank you, once again, for an excellent, excellent report, truly excellent. Comments before we, John?
Yeah, so thank you for the great report. Question would be in regards to the two ways to apply the rolling application or the NOFA. In your professional and learned opinion, do you foresee a period where we won't be oversubscribed for the amount of money that we have for these projects, that the NOFA wouldn't be the primary source of receiving these applications, rather than having this rolling application piece?
In terms of being oversubscribed, likely not. I mean, the second that you say we have funding available, you're likely to get requests that you don't even know exist. Where the rolling application process is really important is in times when the city does need to move quickly in order to either acquire a piece of property, or where they were used most recently and to the greatest effect was during the Great Recession, when projects were on the market and need to be, there needed to be an immediate action. And that's where a rolling application process can really come into play. Additionally, it would take staff some time to put together a NOFA before we could issue that process. So there, we do expect some requests to happen between now, if council were to move forward with adopting these guidelines, and when projects may be needing a funding decision. The main rationale behind that is, I had mentioned some state funding. In the staff report, we talk about the Local Housing Trust Fund, which is a fund that's being put into place. We already expect a NOFA from the state that may require a decision before we know when that NOFA would be released, when we'd be able to release our own NOFA. We are still waiting to kind of hear back when the state is going to be issuing their
Trying to understand the process, would it make sense to have a specific period, quarterly, semiannually, whatever it is, that we're going to have this NOFA process? My, my concern is, is that, and it might be unfounded, is that as soon as, like you said, as soon as we announce, hey, there's Housing Trust Fund, the, the applications are going to, are going to roll in, and it's, and for you guys, it's going to be a lot of work all the time, rather than during a specific period. You know, for like, for example, the CDBG grants that, that are done on an annualized basis, there is an open period for application, and then the evaluation and the recommendations are done, and those funds are distributed. I, I kind of see this as, as a possibility to, to do something similar, where we have a specific program in place, because the house, the, you know, the funds are going to be limited, we, we know that. I mean, to your, to your point, we've got a couple of one-time things that are coming in, and if the developers, you, you made a comment, and I wanted to clarify before I forget about it, you made a comment, if, if the city needed to act to acquire a property, is, is that really what this is for, for us to, to buy property and hold as the city? You know, I thought this was more along the lines of helping developers that would want to help us meet some of our goals, that we're not going to get in the business of, of buying property.
It, how trust funds have been used in the past specifically for acquiring property is oftentimes, developers may not necessarily have the cash on hand to purchase a property when it comes on the market. And so sometimes, other jurisdictions will step in to use their trust fund dollars to acquire that property for future development or to deed-restrict it as affordable. Often, when that is being set up, the, the way that those funds are provided can then be restructured, either as a loan, a forgivable loan, some other mechanism where it then gets repaid. But the upfront cash is provided to, to kind of close on that project as quickly as possible because it is on the open market. That's really kind of where you see that happening the most often.
Okay. And then just, and then just following up on that piece of, of the, the way that it's structured, like I said, my concern would be- like I said, my concern would be for staff time. If we're just always in this rolling, there's always going to, seems to be a project available that as soon as we announce these funds, it's going to be, that I don't know that we'll ever get into a NOFA-type thing before we're allocating all the funds that we have available to us. If they're all going to, it appears they would, you know, come more on the rolling application pieces than if we had something structured, and everybody knows about it. It might take, you know, a little bit of time for people to get used to that, but I just strongly think that having something more structured than, as the primary option. I guess you got to leave it open, but this is my question. Thanks.
Thank you, John.
Yes, thank you. So excellent report, and it's nice, in the first part of the meeting, we talked about, oh, we're going to be talking about something that was one of the policies, and here we are. So it's nice that we're moving ahead so quickly. My question is about what the funding can be used for. We actually had received public comment in the prior hearing, which was similar to mine, was having the funds, what the funds are exactly going to, and you have a list here, but had you considered having the funds just go towards housing, as opposed to some of the other softer studies? One of them listed feasibility studies, things like that. Was there a discussion of something that, you know, you end up with something tangible that's more related to a unit, as it were?
It's a great question. Part of why funding those pre-construction costs, those feasibility study costs, is oftentimes, those are the most expensive and riskyest parts of a project to fund. And so it's the hardest part of a project to get financing for. So really, it's taking a look at the project as a whole to really understand kind of what are the major gaps that a project might need. And that might be the technical study, or it might be getting them through pre-construction, when they're, when an affordable housing developer is able to then secure longer, cheaper, less risky funding. So it really is very different project to project, as to why you may want to decide to fund some things that aren't necessarily straight construction costs, that may be more the technical studies.
Well, and I understand that it would ultimately come before, if this were to go forward, come before the council, but when you put it that way, it actually doesn't make me more comfortable with it, because I want to have units. And we've had, this money, these dollars are precious. I mean, everyone here agrees that they're precious. And so at the end of the day, I would rather look back and say, we held on to them, and we maybe didn't do the riskier one, but we helped get four more units, or we converted, versus we funded a study that, it's just my sense, I'll be curious what my colleagues say. But that was one of the things. And I want it to be as flexible, but I also really want to use these precious dollars in a way that have tangible benefits, that we can point to as a council and as a community.
There would be one clarification on that. Usually, the request, and again, we need an application to look at, the request would be significantly less for earlier on in the development process. So a feasibility study for a specific project may be significantly less small, the request, than something that's saying we need to make a trade-off.
I understand, okay. No, I appreciate that clarification. It's still, it's still money out the door. Thank you.
I want to agree with both the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Gablin. These dollars are very precious, as is our staff's time. There aren't many of these dollars. It seems like a lot, you know, a million dollars seems like a lot, but when it comes to constructing housing, this is a drop in the bucket. And they need to be leveraged to the maximum. I find it hard to imagine a scenario where I would vote in favor of some sort of using this as seed money, using this for initial studies. These dollars need to be put in a place where they will make the most difference. This needs to be the last dollar that they need to make a project happen in San Rafael. I would certainly be looking for, and on leverage rates, I would be looking for at least a 10x. We can't be funding more than a tenth, one-tenth of any project. We need to make this make a difference, and we don't want to turn our staff into sitting, you know, having to look at every application that comes in, applications rolling in all year round, constantly having applicants here for one of the very long and expansive list of possibilities that you set out. So I think we should be narrowing it down and focusing in on exactly the gap that we're willing to fill, and not suggest that we would be open to applications for, or requests for these initial sort of speculative stages of a project.
All good comments, I think, and I guess I might be maybe a little more willing to venture into perhaps troubled waters, if there's strong probability of success and may not be known at the outset, so I might be a little bit more willing to step up. I have a question that just sort of dawned on me, and so maybe it's really a dumb question, and if it is, tell me. But let's assume for the moment we've decided to partially fund a particular project, that would be early on. How does that influence design review and planning commissions process? Because if we have, the city has money invested, now don't, are we, are we, you know, are we independent, or have we lost that?
Yeah, so it goes back to both readiness of a project, so making sure that the project has a foreseeable path forward, and as we consider the criteria for funding. Additionally, there is a time horizon, so the funds need to be expended within a certain amount of time from an awarding happened, when we decide to award a project. And that would then kind of go back to that readiness. So a project that may be very early days, because of that readiness question, may not have the same amount of staff recommendation for funding that sort of request.
And that might have answered my question, but I'm not sure that it has, because I'm still not clear as to our independence, which, you know, a planning commission is supposed to independently look at the project and apply the principles we have, et cetera, et cetera. But now, if we have a vested interest in the outcome, doesn't that, doesn't that taint it, or maybe I'm, maybe I'm missing the boat here?
Mr. Mayor, it's a good question. It's not a dumb question.
Oh, good. Thank you.
So, good question.
Wouldn't be the first one.
And I, there would be the same responsibility of our design review board, planning commission, and city council to ultimately, when the project's presented, to decide the project free from bias. And I can understand that that would, you know, potentially be difficult for an individual, for the reason that you just stated, but I also have confidence in those bodies, when they're presented with the merits of a project, to not be swayed by a decision earlier on to seed the project, if you will, to give it the opportunity to get that far. It would be disappointing, I think, to everyone, in particular, to the city, if the project didn't work out, but I also believe that the, our deciding bodies would have to make a determination that would be independent of any constraint arising from that fact.
I appreciate the input. I guess it underscores Mayor's point with regard to the proportionality of our investment versus others, and if we're heavily invested, we'd be less inclined, say what you will, I suspect. So therefore, I think your point's well taken. Anyone from the public wish to address us on this item?
Karen King.
Oh, I'm sorry, John.
I just had one follow-up.
Yeah, no, go ahead. Sure, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that. It goes back to the previous agenda item in regards to the item on potential selling of air rights over city properties. The proceeds from those funds, should that happen, where would those be designated? Say we have a parking lot, and we sell the air rights for $2 million, where would those funds go? Would they go into this? Could they?
I don't know. That's something we'd have to look at. In fact, we didn't step that far ahead. You're two steps ahead of us, council member.
Yes, as we're looking at the lack of funds, and this, that priority was pushed to 2021, but if it all kind of reaches together, and if it could be used to fund more of this, then it might be something that we would like to accelerate further, but I don't know.
I'd say unless there's any deed restrictions on the property or anything that we're selling, that it's up to the council where you'd want to put the funds. So it could go into general fund, or it could go into this, into this purpose.
Agreed. It would be unrestricted general funds that the council could choose to designate in its budget process, so this would be an option for some, all, or part.
Now, I'll go to the public. Anyone from the public wish to address us on this agenda item?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Joanne Webster, San Rafael Chamber. It's more a question, and I really appreciated your questions to staff, and they're doing a great job and working really hard, and we're very excited about this. And it isn't a whole lot of money. It's about, what, $5 million? And so I think to utilize it so well, and one of the things, sitting on the audience, if I had an example of how these funds could help, are there entitled projects that are for affordable units that can't get kicked off the ground? Is there, you know, there's a lack of funding? What is that funding? So if staff had any examples of current projects that they think could utilize these funds. And then also, I think, you know, the conversion of market-rate housing and making them more affordable, perhaps that's a bigger bang for the buck. So I know Mr. Hennings in the audience, I don't want to call him out, but I've heard that there are projects, you know, that we could have in San Rafael, but they lack that gap, you know, they need that funding. So perhaps if staff were able to give us an idea of what they were thinking about would be helpful.
We'll ask them at the conclusion of the public. Anyone else? Close public, you heard the question, which I think is a good one. What's your response?
The two new construction projects that we know that are trying to fill their gap, that includes 190 Mill Street, which is the Homer Bound project, as well as BioMarin Whistlestop. They both have approached us as potential, they're in very different portions of their entitlement process, and depending upon where they are in their entitlement process depends upon what they can leverage at the state. But those are two projects that we see in the pipeline.
If I may add something, Mayor, and that is this whole issue of readiness. I think it's real important, what Joanne Webster brought up, is that it has a lot to do with how the readiness criterion is weighed when you take a look at these applications. If you may recall, some of you were either on the planning commission or on the city council, when we used to have a competition for traffic capacity, and readiness was the top criterion, next to whatever the public benefit was the project was proposing. And projects that, you know, were already through the process tend to be successful in getting those, that traffic capacity than ones that were way early in the process. So I think that's something to consider when we move forward with the criteria here, that that's going to be weighed heavily.
Thanks for adding that. Good point, certainly. Any, any questions of staff before we go to vote?
Give us this comment.
Yeah, of course, of course.
So thanks, thanks again for the report. I think it was great. My only comment, just to reiterate my initial question, is on the rolling versus the NOFA. Not only is it staff time, but every one of these applications will have to be approved by city council, which means that this could be, you know, if it's on this piece, this could be, if it's an urgency, you know, like you say, every two weeks, we have another one of these projects that might come up, because we'd have to place it on agenda as quickly as possible, if it is truly an urgent need to fit a certain, and I just, I just see that as, you know, potential large complications for all things involved.
And council member, just, so I understand, your suggestion then would be to do the NOFA and respond as a group, rather than taking them piecemeal?
Yeah, because if it's, again, if it's, if these are all going to come to us for approval, having a group of applications done at the same time at a specific meeting, and then we make those approvals and divvy out those funds, then...
And again, just for clarification, and to see if any, if Ethan or Paul have any comments on this, would you leave in the ability to do the rolling just for flexibility in case something came up that you definitely wanted to see, or are you saying that should be struck from the recommendation?
Well, I don't want, I don't want to take everything out, but definitely the preference would, I don't want to get into it being more commonplace, that everybody knows there's this rolling application, so they don't have to wait for something, and they're just, here we go, this is urgent, this is urgent, this is urgent, and then it's, that becomes more of the norm than the exception. So I'm not asking necessarily to take it out, but really to prioritize the NOFA process over the rolling application piece.
If I could add one point to that issue, and that is, and I don't want to go back to this comparison of this priority projects procedure, the traffic capacity program we used to have, but we would do a call for applications once a year back then, and then if it was a real busy year, we would have multiple calls for application during one year. So that's another way to gauge this, so that we minimize the sort of the single requests that may come at a time when it's ripe for maybe launching or releasing a NOFA. So I, we haven't talked about that, but that's another possibility.
Yeah.
Kate?
If I may build on that, I agree with Councilmember Gablin. I mean, this is a new program for us, right? This is a brand-new policy that we're putting into place, and there's something to be said about having it possibly more restrictive than maybe we ultimately where we want it to be, to have the NOFA as opposed to a rolling application, and let's see what happens. And I go back to the precious dollars, and I would love this dollar to be the winning, you know, the piece in all these different projects, in all these different ways, and have it as flexible as possible, and/or but, it might not be able to be that, because it's not a huge amount of money. And so I would rather have the more restrictive of call for applications, and when I look at the funding will be available for the costs, again, what Councilmember Bushy said, I mean, if there's a way to tighten that up, I would rather have it tighter. Let's see what happens, and we can revisit this. I think it's much harder if we start with this really broad, super-open, it's going to be much harder to dial it back, and we want this to be effective. At the end of the day, what we want are these dollars to be utilized in the community to build units, and we'll know after we put the program into place whether that's been successful or not. So...
Good comment. Further comment, or a motion would be appropriate.
I move that we adopt the resolution, adopting guidelines for the administration of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Thank you. In a second? Do I hear a second?
Well, is there a clarification with the comments that we just gave? Are you fine with it as presented?
And asking that staff take into consideration the comments that we've made in their exercise of these guidelines.
Well stated. Is there a second to the motion?
Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I just want to make sure we have clarification from the staff side. There is a definition of eligible activity in the definition section, and the first three things there relate to, sorry, seed catalyst funds for very early costs, land or property acquisition, and pre-development. Just want to make sure I'm understanding, is the council saying you'd like us to omit those things at this, at this time? And then I want to ask Paul and Ethan if there are other areas too, or if that's the main area that calls that out. Or are you saying you'd like to, you'd leave them in for now, because it's providing flexibility, but you're giving us direction that you're really interested in four, five, and six, which are creating units? Does that make sense?
John?
Yeah, I would, without tipping any hats to how we might potentially vote on projects that were submitted for these scarce dollars, I would, I would say if there was any way to, when you were receiving applications or putting a priority on those, that the priority would be after one, two, and three.
We can handle it in the notice of funding availability, then, at that.
Yeah, that we would prioritize these projects. I mean, if, if we had all the funding that we needed, and someone wants to submit $50,000 for a catalyst funds or pre-development architecture piece, and it's there and it makes sense, that's one thing. So I don't, speaking for myself, I don't necessarily, we need to take it off, but as we start this process, since it is a new process, prioritizing the real tangible dollars going to projects that are ready, and, you know, shovels are in the ground almost, and nails are being driven, that type of piece. That's just for me.
And I would, I would tend to agree with that, but I think that does give us flexibility to accomplish the goals that we've stated, and by eliminating, we might also pair off some of the stated goal opportunities. The priority, I think, does make some sense.
No, I appreciate that clarification on that piece. On the part of the application process, Councilmember Bushy, were you fine with it as presented, the NOFA and/or the rolling? Because you'd also had...
Yes. Yes, to have those both available, but again, I guess we're relying on staff to manage that, that process. And, well, let's turn around and ask them.
What I'm hearing from the council is that you'd rather, you'd like to see a NOFA take place first, before we bring any rolling applications to you.
That's a good clarification. And with that clarification, I will provide a second.
As presented, the motion itself?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Collin.
Aye.
Councilmember Gablin.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I matter carries for zero. Any, anything? Any, anything we need to take into consideration?
No, we're good. Thank you.
Oh, good. Well, excellent report, gentlemen. It's really sorely needed at this point, and you've done an outstanding job, I would suggest. And thanks, thanks for everybody to help us, who make the decision. Let's move on to the council members' reports.
If I may, I'm on Marin Transit, and we had two exciting things that we talked about at our last meeting, and that is both the monthly passes, as well as senior passes, are going to be decreased by their cost up to 50%, or up to 50%. The reason for that is to increase pass usage, passes usage versus cash, and second, to increase transit usage. So that is a big change, and it's offset in other areas of the budget, so hopefully that will increase numbers. And then the other San Rafael-specific input is Marin Transit Connect is currently a service that, if you live in the Terre Linda area, it's kind of like Uber or Lyft, you can call with, or with an application, excuse me, with an app, not application, an app, and you can get picked up and taken to, before it was any place in Terre Linda. We just expanded the pilot that you now can be picked up in downtown, or dropped off in downtown San Rafael. So expanding it to both the Smart Station as well as downtown proper, so hopefully there'll be increased usage there. So that will benefit our San Rafael residents, and we'll keep you posted as to how the pilot goes.
And hopefully, there'll be plenty of publicity so people are aware of that. They may not.
Well, this is part of the publicity, right here.
Oh, I, yeah, I know, but.
Those go into effect on February 1st.
All the respect to our.
All the people watching at home, all the people watching at home. Thank you.
So that would be the only thing that I would hope for. Any other comments? I'll just quickly touch on a couple of things that you're aware of to some degree. First being BioMarin, we had a public workshop that you all attended. We took that, we being Andrew and I, back to BioMarin, had a discussion, and you know the outcome. It's roughly $400,000 for first and last mile, sorely needed, I would suggest, and also $500,000 to improve our signalization and whatever other, our traffic folks can come up with, it's going to help some of the crowded congestion that we now see. You probably saw in the newspaper editorial about Homer's comments on some of our website applications in the canal particularly. We had a brief discussion today, and I'll pass that on to you, but I think that we've come up with an approach that might benefit that area as well. And then finally, on Smart, as you know, there's an election that's coming up in March. It was interesting to us, certainly when we heard that a single donor in the Sonoma has contributed $560,000 so far to the opposition. So that, that's going to make it interesting. And I understand my fellow councilmembers decided to match that, I don't know, maybe I didn't get that completely right, but nevertheless, we have a significant, oh boy, public relations, if you will, and be aware, I'll say this for mostly the public that's watching, that some of the information, I've been somewhat involved in this thing, and certainly some of the information that's being provided by way of promotion to the opposition is just flat-out wrong. So I share that with you, at least from my observation, so take it for what it's worth. Having said that, let's go on to the San Rafael, you didn't have any good.
Nope.
Okay. San Rafael Successor Agency Quarterly Investment Report.
I'd be delighted to move the consent calendar.
Thank you.
Second.
I can't keep ahead of these folks. Move in a second, roll call, please.
Member Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Chair Collin.
Aye.
Member Gablin.
Aye.
Chair Phillips.
I matter carries four zero, and we are adjourned.